Okay, we call the meeting to order. And I am Patty Wood, the Vice President. And President Randy Eaton is not feeling well, so we wish him best of luck to, you know, in his house. But so I will conduct the meeting. So on our agenda, we have the approval of the agenda. One of the items that we need to amend on the agenda is number 10. To move that one to closed session, it is on the Energy Innovation Center lease and equipment removal. And so I will need a motion to accept the agenda with that amendment.
Motion move, all second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right, time for citizens comments. Alexis, do we have any citizens comments?
No, we do not.
All right, so we're ready for the approval of the minutes from the November 23rd Board Meeting. It's been published as well as we have a copy of it. Entertain a motion.
Motion move.
Second.
All second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, so now we're going to have Vice President Akif to give us about the audited financial report for the year that ended in June 30th of 2021.
Although the highlight of this summer meeting is always the audit report, so Merry Christmas. We have with us today Rebecca Baker, who's a partner at KPM in Springfield, their higher education practice for several years. Many, many higher education auditors was lead auditor on our audit as well. So really thrilled to have her here to present the audit, and her tell us her findings. And Rebecca, your call yours. And you have in front of you, by the way, a copy of the audit, the letter, KPM transmit letter, and a letter called Procedures, which we should go over.
All right, so if you'd like to follow along, we start on page three of the report. So like Keith said, we have performed a financial statement audit, and also we have performed a federal compliance audit for the college, which includes the foundation as well for June 30, 2021. So on page three, you'll find our independent auditor's report. Now, we perform an audit to determine if the college's financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, and then we issue an opinion based on those audit results. And the college has received an unmodified or clean opinion, which is the best opinion they can get, so congratulations. And next, we go to page seven. Page seven is where the management's discussion and analysis begins. It's about six pages long. This section is required by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, however, we do not issue our opinion on this section. It is un-audited. I just wanted to point it out to you, if you do not read any other part of this book, this is a good section to get a good financial overview of what happened at the college during the year. Okay, next, we'll go to page 14. Page 14 is where the financial statements begin, and these are the combined financial statements. So there's just one total column, and it includes the college and the foundation. So I'm actually going to go over in a little more detail the combining financial statements, so you can see the college and foundation separately. And so I'll do that a little bit later. Next, we'll go to page 20. Page 20 is where the notes to the financial statements begin. The notes are about 25 pages long. They are a required part of the financial statements, and we do issue our opinion on the notes. They give more detailed information on the college's significant accounting policies, and the types of investments you're holding, future debt service, et cetera. So we do encourage you to read the notes in conjunction with the financial statements. Okay, next, we'll go to page 44. Page 44 is where the combining financial statements begin. So you'll see, this is the statement of net position. So you'll see the college in the first column, the foundation in the second column, and then the third column is an eliminations column. So any transactions between the college and the foundation get eliminated for your financial statements that are presented at the front. So I'll briefly go through the financial statements. Total assets for the college at year end were 51.7 million. This was an increase of about 4 million from the previous year. Most of that increase was in cash and investments. They increased 5.8 million from the previous year, and then capital assets decreased about 1.2 million. Total deferred outflows were 9.7 million, and these are related to the pension and OPEC plan, and they're essentially prepaid expenses, and you'll recognize an expense for these items later. Total liabilities for the college were 35.9 million. This was an increase of about 4 million from the previous year. Most of that increase is due to the net pension liability, which you really don't have much control over. That increased about 4.7 million. And then your long-term debt actually decreased 1.2 million due to principal payments on debt. Then you have deferred inflows of resources, which were 3.7 million. This was a decrease of 1.6 million, and these are essentially revenues that you'll recognize in future periods related to pension and OPEC. So total net position at year end was 21.8 million. And net investment in capital assets, such your capital assets net of the debt used to acquire those assets, was 27.8 million, and your unrestricted net position was 6 million. And the reason that number is negative is related to the pension and OPEC deferred inflows, outflows, and liabilities. If you were to remove those from your financial statements, they actually have a negative impact on your financial statements of almost $20.6 million. Your financial position would be much better, but you also, you wouldn't be presenting your financial statements in accordance with the accounting standards. So you are required to present that information, even though it does have a negative impact on your financial position. Okay, the second column is the foundation. Total assets for the foundation were 29.9 million. This was an increase of 11.5 million for the previous year. Cash and investments increased 8.9 million. A lot of that increase was due to the UMB lease proceeds that still haven't been spent a year, and there were still about 6 million sitting in that trust account. And then the accounts receivable increased about 600,000 from the previous year, and that's because of the capital campaign that's going on to raise funds for the Workforce Innovation Center. Total liabilities for the foundation were 7.1 million. This was increased because the foundation now has 6.1 million in the note, lease revenue note, that's outstanding. And then the foundation's net position was 22.8 million at current. Okay, the next page is the combining statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in net position, so like an income statement. Total operating revenues for the college were 21.2 million. This was an increase, or actually a decrease, of about 520,000 for the previous year, mainly due to student tuition fees. Operating expenses were 43.9 million. This was an increase of 1.2 million from the previous year. And non-operating revenues, you can see state appropriations were 7.39,000. This was an increase of about 1.8 million from the previous year. Part of that increase, the college received some coronavirus relief funds as a beneficiary, so not as a federal grant from the Department of Higher Education. That was a million dollars that you received extra, so that was most of that increase. Non-exchange grant revenue, which includes Pell and HIRF funds, was 13.4 million. That was an increase of 4.9 million from the previous year. And as we go down, the county property tax revenue remained pretty similar, 3.9 million. Gifts and donations were 954,000. Investment income was around 199,000. And then interest paid on debt was around 230,000. So the increase in the college was 2.6 million for the year. Now, once again, if you didn't have to recognize pension expense related to the pension and OPEC, that increase would have been about $2 million higher, so about 4.6 million. Okay, and then quickly, I'll go through the foundation. Total operating expenses were 1.2 million. This was an increase of 548,000 from the previous year. And then gifts and donations for the foundation increased 537,000 from the previous year. Investment income was up 52,000, and gain on investments was up almost $3 million. And then you can see they had to pay debt on, or interest on the new debt of 133,000, leaving them with an increase of 4.5 million for the year. Okay, does anyone have any questions on the financial information? Okay, next, we'll go to page 57. So anytime the college spends over $750,000 in federal funds, you're required to have what's called a federal compliance audit. So on page 57 and 58, this lists all the different federal funds that the college spent during the fiscal year. So on page 58, the total spent during the year was almost $19.5 million. This was an increase of about $4 million from the previous year. So there are certain requirements on what we have to test. Any program that exceeds $750,000 has to be tested at least once every three years. So the programs we tested this year were student financial aid, which we always have to test. And then we also tested the education stabilization fund, which is the HIRF funding that the college receives. And that program, anytime it exceeds 750,000, has to be tested every single year because it's considered a high-risk program. Okay, next, we've got to page 60 and look at the results from the federal compliance audit. So about halfway down, you can see the programs that we tested, student financial assistance and education stabilization funds. So I'm very happy to report, we do not have any findings to report this year on the student financial assistance cluster or the education stabilization fund. I know nobody ever wants to have findings, and the student financial assistance program is a complicated program, and there are a lot of different things that we have to test. So it's unusual for us not to have a finding, but we did not have any findings during the year on either program. Okay, the last thing I want to go over is the management letter. So you should have a loose letter. It says new pronouncements about halfway down the page. Or the found, yeah, it's a loose one. And so we just have a couple new accounting pronouncements that will impact the college in future years. The first one's Gatsby 87. We've been talking about this for many, many years. It was actually supposed to be effective for the June 30, 2021 year, however, it got delayed due to COVID. So it is now effective for the June 30, 2022 fiscal year, so the new fiscal year that you're in. And what this is, is any operating lease. So the way it will impact the colleges, the classroom leases that you have that are long-term with different entities. Typically, those aren't showing on your statement of net position as a liability, and they will have to now. You'll have an intangible asset, and you'll show that you owe those for future years. Currently, they aren't shown on the financial statements. The second item is Gatsby 96, subscription-based information technology agreements or arrangements. This isn't effective until 2023, however, and we just wanted to remind you that it's there. And I think Banner, your software, might fall under this, where you also have to show that it's a capital asset if you're in a long-term agreement to use the program. And there might be some other programs that fall into this agreement. So I just encourage you, if you see any classes or anything on these items that you kind of researched on, see what you have at the college that will fall under these new standards. Okay, does anyone have any questions? Okay, well, one last thing I want to go over. There's, it's an agreed-upon procedures. It has a staple in it. This is something new that we had to do this year. The state of Missouri, through the Missouri One Start Program, required what's called an agreed-upon procedures engagement. So we had to actually look at the customized training, new jobs training, and job retention training programs, and look at information that the state receives from the college and compare it. So they gave us a list of six items that we have to review, and then we're supposed to report any findings to the state. This is a new requirement, and every year by 1231, this report has to be submitted to the state. So we, there's no, I guess the variance doesn't matter. It could be the most insignificant item, but we still have to report it to them. So they gave us a list of six items, and we went through, and we did have one finding on this program. And it's on the second page. If you go to number five, we had to look at the customized training program. We took a sample from the quarterly training activity report to verify reimbursement from Missouri One Start to the college, and then the college is to reimburse the company for training. And we looked at 12 different disbursements, and one of those disbursements didn't get reimbursed to the company. And to me, as an auditor, I'm like, well, who cares? 11 made it, you know, and it was a really small dollar amount, but they want to know exactly what, what we found. So we basically have to tell them, one out of 12 was not reimbursed. When we were here for the audit, I do know that there was a lot of discussion, and they made sure that that payment got made while we were here. So there is a response from the college. Basically, I think there was some employee, some employees were out at the time, so there was just some confusion, and it didn't get, it didn't get written to the company. So it's one thing that they said that they've put some steps in place, so that won't happen again. So this is something I believe has to be done every single year, and the state may adapt the, it may adapt the procedures that have to be done. But anyway, Amy Jackson and Emily Twitter worked with us on these, and they were very helpful and had really good records, and we thought they did a really good job, but we hated to have a finding. But I don't know what the state will do with that information. They said this is new to them, too. So they just kind of want to see the information that they get from all the different colleges that are utilizing these programs. Okay, well, in closing, I just want to let you all know that Diane and Keith and everybody that we come into contact with during the course of the audit, and they take really good care of us. They provide us with all of our information in a timely manner, and they're very cooperative and professional, and everyone at the foundation as well, and we really appreciate everybody's help.
Does anybody have any further questions or comments on that? Well, we want to thank you for what you do, because I know this is a big undertaking, but I just, and we as a board, I know, want to say thanks to all of our employees and staff, because with their diligence, you know, they, they take care of detail, and that's important, and so we appreciate all that they've done. And we're not all perfect, and I know that, you know, I'm sure that they will definitely have something in place to catch that the next time, but, so thank you, Steph, and finance, and wherever. It takes a lot of reporting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So it is recommended that the Board of Trustees accept the audit and results of the annual financial report and related information as presented by KPM, CPA's, PCC for the year from June 30th, 2021. I want to echo Diane, thank you. I just want to echo what Rebecca said, you know, Diane and Keith and all of our business office staff, Mary and her staff, and Angel Leffert in the Financial Aid Office. It takes all of them working together.
Thank you. So I will entertain a motion. Second.
All second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So, let's see. So now, so we're Vice President Akif again. We need your warrant number five in November 2021.
For the month of November, the college dispersed 4.68,989 of that. 1.57 was in accounts payable, was 4,000, that was payments to pros for the Ola Howard Workforce Innovation Center. 98,000 payroll, 198,000 in income and payroll taxes on that payroll. And financially refunds, which includes some HIRF student grants, was 856,000, utilities 55,000, and then some credit card processing fees. But anyway, total disbursements of little over $4 million would be in line with what I expect.
We'll entertain a motion to accept that report.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Anybody, any questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, stay where you are. We need you for the next few things, so.
Right, so next slide, as we're beginning our infill at Ola Howard Workforce Innovation Center. Empty building isn't very good, so obviously the equipment in there. And we have a Mooc sales grant that Dr. Bates and Dean Rawl put together. So we're starting to use those funds to purchase equipment. Some of that, Dean Rawl will tell you a little bit about what first couple of purchases are that we've got in place to start going in there, and then we'll all give the full motion to accept that for that. Thank you. Good afternoon. Just a brief update, you'll see two warrants in your packet for equipment. This is the first of some Mooc cell expenditures going to be seen. We've got expenditures for both welding and precision machining in this grant. We're starting with some Haas, it's single-source equipment. And the first, the first one, you'll notice number seven is a five-axis CNC machine, and it will move industry forward. Industry is waiting, in some cases, for us to get this equipment in, start training students on it, which enables them to purchase it also and incorporate it to their operations. So number seven and number eight are both support pieces of equipment for the program and for local industry. Good for the students, good for the college, and good for business and industry. Certainly stand for any questions about these.
So you mentioned students would get training. Is there any training that has to be done for the employees, the instructors first?
Yes, yes, and that, that's pretty directly done through Haas as, as a part of this purchase. So it's, I think the instructional staff is well-prepared, is well-prepared to hit the ground running with this equipment. Of course, you need to get it in, it hands-on, and there's always updates every year, so it continues to have new uses every year.
Do these together?
I guess just each separate.
Each separate set.
So.
Oh, go ahead.
So the first one is, as he said, the five-axis vertical machining center Haas, total price there 185, 55, 55. As he said, these are being paid for with the Mooc sales grants that we have to infill the machining center, or infill the precision machining center. So like, recommend the Board of Trustees approve purchase of this piece of equipment with Mooc silver ants.
Do I hear a motion?
Sure.
Second.
All second.
Any more discussion? Needing any more information? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Number eight, the second one that Mike talked about is, is two Haas CNC lathes, again, to infill the precision machining center, and again, being bought with a Mooc sales gears funds, Mooc sales, Mooc sales funds grant. And total price of those two lathes is 106,065.50. I recommend the Board of Trustees approve this purchase.
All right, entertain a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And one more thing.
Number nine, along with the four buses that are coming from Bittsville as a part of their donation, they also have available a smaller four-transit passenger van, which is a lot more economical and practical for certain travel when you don't need an entire 52-person boat coach. They've given us the first right to purchase that for a price of 37,500. Talking with Darren, the next, that may be a great addition to the fleet. It's again, much more economical than having to take the bus at every, no one of the major buses, at every turn, or even renting a passenger van. So it is our recommendation, Board of Trustees approve the purchase. That's a 2,424 passenger or transit van for 37,500, RJP group, which is Bittsville. Used for SFCC transportation purposes only, not available for hire, and would be out of this year's budget.
All right, I'll entertain a motion for the four transit passenger van.
Motion move.
Second.
Sir.
All in, is there any other discussion, question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, so as mentioned, number 10 will be moved to closed session, so we'll move to number 11.
Well, 11, I'm going to, you know, before, very briefly, Derek Kramer, let you talk a little bit more about what we're doing with CTC welding. So again, you can get an update on what's happening in those programs, there, what's going on in the series.
I challenged you last night. I saw him last night, and I heard he was coming to the board, and I said, all right.
I remember my glasses this time, too.
Oh, good.
And I can read and pay attention here. Last month, you guys were gracious enough to accept the Gear Two funds grant, and we are already using that money efficiently. So what we're asking for this time includes two TIG welders. This, all these pieces of equipment are going to allow us to expand our welding program on the CTC side and introduce new processes and opportunities to our students. So it includes two welders, chop saw, rod oven, belt grinder and pedestal. The big things are fixture table, fixture table accessories, and a metal cutting bandsaw, to name a few. So this is going to allow our kids to experience new things. We're actually adding in fabrication, so that we can also offer that as dual credit in the near future for our high school students.
Questions for Eric?
Just out of curiosity, when you get bids like this, is it typically for you to only get two companies respond to that? I know, I read your letter, and I was just.
Yeah, it, it is. You know, sometimes more want to get involved, sometimes they don't. The big thing with what we're having right now is the fluctuation of prices are just, and I think some are just saying we're not even going to fool with it, because they may give us a bid, but then by next week, it's, it's already going up again, so.
I just thought it was interesting, really, only one company.
Yeah.
Really gave you everything you asked for. Thank you. Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
Actually agree with you on that. I just think it's fascinating, you know?
Anyway, so we'd like to ask the Board, Board of Trustees, to accept a bid from Airgas for 53,746.03 for the equipment listed in the, in the packet there. And again, it's being paid for by the, 100% by the S E, your two grant that you all approved last, last session.
I will entertain a motion.
Motion move.
Second, one of you.
You both said at the same time, yeah.
You take the motion, I'll take the second. Okay.
Any other questions or clarification? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, we get a new face, Dr. Bates. Tell us about the new academic program.
Our policy requires board approval for new programs, and so we're here today to ask for your approval for a new associate applied science degree in behavioral health support. There's a critical need in the state for behavioral health technicians. We were approached by not only the Department of Mental Health in the state, but also local partners, Compass and Morel Health, to develop, to help solve their workforce needs in that area. The state identified six community college with which to work on this project, and we were one of those. We received grant funds to develop the curriculum for the program, and so we're, we're ready to go with that. This program has been through our internal processes and has received approval of our faculty curriculum committee. So upon your approval, then we would submit it to the state for approval, and once it receives the state's approval, then we go into Higher Learning Commission and the Federal Department of Education for approval. So you're kind of the first approval step past the internal processes. So any questions?
Is this a transfer program or is it a, or a?
It's to train people for a job. It's an associate applied science degree, so it's training, moving them straight into the workforce, in an entry-level position in behavioral.
Dr. Bates, what would be the objective of the students who would be going through the process?
Um, that's, that's a great question. I think, so, I don't have this.
Well, it's hard to, it would write off. It's something we don't know.
Right, right off the.
Rough, just a rough idea.
We believe it takes three to five years for a program to kind of reach its maturity and numbers, and we think we can get 25, 30 in, in that program over that time.
Pretty, I would think that would be decent numbers.
It, we can make it go with that, yes. Yeah. That's a great question. Dr. Hudson Yan couldn't be here today. She would have done this presentation. I said, I got your back. I'm going to get even with her.
Any further questions? Richard, did I see?
This is something we'll get an update on, is, is goes further, further along, and after it gets started, it'll come back. So to that, to see, see, see how, how the progress is going.
Sure.
But this is a. But this is a, this is a program that is being part of, there's some emphasis and push at the state level for, for community colleges to offer this type of program.
That's right, and other community colleges has already had the program and are, are training folks in it right now. So they were quicker out of the game. But we're, our program's gonna be a little unique. We're gonna combine some distance learning elements so that we can deliver the program to all of our existing campus sites. And because our, our partners really have multiple locations throughout our area. So, you know, we think we can best serve multiple communities in our service region with this approach. The curriculum is very strict defined by the state. But we'll be among the first to kind of develop it into a distance, partially distance learning option to meet the needs of people in our community.
Richard, I would just add to that. It used to be that pretty much those going and working in the mental health had to have a bachelor's or a master's degree with licensed, you know, professionals. And though I know, I knew where your questioning was going, those positions still require that. However, because there's so much demand, it's kind of like the medical assisting in the medical field. This is kind of an entry, an entry position, and they can do intake and some other things that, that needs to be done as people get mental health services.
And I, I, I appreciate the, the distance learning. As with the program, we can, don't have to have all twenty-five to thirty students on this campus. Their focus is, will be able to, to participate in the program in the community where they, where they're employed.
Yeah, and you know, we have rural health kind of to the, to the east, and we have Compass Health to the west, who are, you know, very interested in individuals that will be trained in this program, so.
I, I work on both of those things daily. The need is so unbelievable. I think it's gonna be a big.
Anybody else? Well, so I will entertain a motion to accept this new academic program of the associate of applied science degree in behavioral health support.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The oppositions say nay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, Dr. Anderson.
All right, thank you, Dr. Bates. I'm, I'm gonna have a couple of people share my report time. And one, I've asked Rachel to come and share with you an update on the presidential search so that that information is public. And then Justin, I've asked him to kind of bring you up to speed on the Olin Howard Center, and then I'll add some other things. So Rachel?
Thank you. So in the spirit of transparency, we're trying to keep up on all the details. And as you guys know, we have our presidential search webpage out there that we're trying to keep information up to date as well. I want to start by saying that the board, you guys, put your faith in the search committee and chose for us to do an internal search versus hiring a search firm. And I cannot tell you how proud I am of that group and how much interest we've gotten. And as I share some of these demographics, I just think it's important to note that, that we had a total of thirty-seven applicants. The nineteen percent of those applicants were female. We did a nationwide search, so I think I mentioned that to you guys before. We had applicants from across twenty states, everywhere from Rhode Island to California, from Texas to Minnesota and everywhere in between. We had about, let's see, I figured out, we had like nineteen, well, thirty-five percent of our candidates were from the Midwest area. So kind of the, the four states, because I know that there was some question about, you know, understanding Midwest values and things like that. So I truly feel that we have had a very diverse group of candidates that have applied for this position. So I'm really excited about that. I think it speaks highly of the committee. I think they worked really hard to get the word out, and that took everybody, and, and really you guys too, getting the word out. We had our input form, which I think was great. Just a little more on the demographics, we, I mentioned nineteen percent of applicants were female. We had seventy percent of applicants have a PhD. When we talked about how they heard about the position, so getting the word out. So we posted in Chronicles of Higher Education, HigherEdJobs.com. We put out to LinkedIn, Brad created the presidential profile and the college profile, which we sent out to all of our, our groups through MoCoopa and just all of our connections. So we really got the word out. We had sixteen percent of the candidates applied through Chronicles of Higher Education, fifty-one percent through HigherEdJobs.com, twenty-two percent came in through referrals, and eleven percent came directly through the SFCC website. So that's just some demographics on the candidates themselves, and I think that the numbers were really great. Our next steps, we concluded today, concluded our first round of interviews. We interviewed twelve candidates. And from that, our group will need to elect who we would like to move forward to what we call the semifinalists. And as I mentioned before, the semifinalist, the plan is to actually bring those folks on campus so that we can get maximum input from the college employees and the community. So they would come do a face-to-face interview with the committee, the search committee. They would do a public presentation that would be open to the community and college employees, and it would be recorded. And then they would meet with key stakeholder groups, so groups throughout the campus, leadership, things like that. From there, then we would take all of that input and make a decision on who we would like to make to final recommendations to the board and put it in your hands at that point. So that's what I have to update you so far. Patty, do you have anything you want to add?
No, just that you know, the committee, I will tell you, is definitely you see the commitment because there is a lot of time that we're, it's all done via Zoom. So, you know, there were people who were having to work, but giving up their time. Certainly, you know, we've done it very consistently for, for each one of the candidates. You know, the questions that were asked was asked of each one, so we've tried to be consistent so that you're not, you know, doing for one that you're not doing for another. Very well organized, so appreciate the leadership that we've gotten from, you know, Rachel and Brad and just, you know, that sort of thing has been helpful because we all know, you, we have to be taught a little bit about how to add smart sheet, which, you know, some of us aren't into that, that sort of thing. So, but they trained us, and so, yeah, I think it's, you know, going well. Excellent people that are out there, so, you know, I think we've got, we'll bring to you a pool, you know, that I think are just outstanding people.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Justin, you want to bring us up to date, not only on the progress at the Olin Howard Center, but we've got some internal things going on as well as we've talked about, looking at both dining, campus store. And so, Justin, thanks very much.
Olin Howard building is going along well. We have, the underground retention was put underground. If you haven't drove by and saw that, it's, it's covered up now, so those yellow tubes are all underground. The heat is on the building, so we got the gas meter installed late last week, I believe on Friday. So we do have heat in the building, so we have drywall going up on the walls. As soon as we get the building tempered just a little bit more, we'll probably start putting the tape if they're gonna get the, get the actual drywall sheets on first. They're continuing installing equipment for the desk collection system, so that the tubes and things like that that go into that system, the, some of the large components have started to arrive. The HVAC system that cools, cools the building has also arrived, so those were being installed in last week outside. Excuse me, in this week. And so we're, we're really, we're moving quite along. January seventeenth, they're gonna start staining some of the concrete floors, so that'll be classrooms and hallways. So the drywall doing that ahead of time will help us to have, not have to protect the floor. So we can, we can hopefully get pretty far with the drywall before that. So that's going well, they've, they've done a sample area of that, and we've, we've looked at it, it looks well too. So moving right along. We did lose our superintendent that's been on the job since, since we started, his name is Jeremy. So they're far along enough in the project that he's been moved on to another project. So his specialty really is the concrete and the beginning stages of the project. So his expertise was, was highly valued, he's moved on. So his second in command, who's been there since probably day two, whose name is Chase. And so he's kind of taken the reins, and we still have their project managers, Jason. So they've kind of changed reins a little bit, but we've helped them to be better, so the communication is still there. So that's going well. I met with, see my plan with color all over it, I met with the consultant that we have to talk about the kitchen renovation that would involve moving the campus store. And really, they've come up with some fantastic ideas. What we did was we went to the consultant to say, hey, lay out the equipment and how we could, and then we've got the architect there at the same time, so we're making that equipment plan, now we're putting it, overlaying it with the architect a little bit, make sure we're all code compliant. And as they're doing that over the next couple of weeks, then we're gonna bring the administration back in and let everybody see this. We'll start putting some real hard numbers to it. I have numbers that'll scare you with the equipment, but you know, when they first do that, they, they put everything in there, right? You know, and so we'll go back through and say, well, we already have this, we already have that, you know. We'll plan this one for, you know, you know, second phase or that sort of thing. So we've got some details to, to work out with, with those sort of things. Simultaneously, we're still working on the bookstore move, so I met with the architect today so we can finalize some of those plans, and we'll be meeting with Ollie next week, not, week after next, as soon as we get back from break, so we can get some of those things even further on paper, we can bring the rest of the stakeholders involved with other moves, which would be trio and tutoring and those folks, and make sure everybody's on the same page with the plan with those moves as well. We've got other projects, but I don't have any real updates where you get on those. But they're all behind the scenes, working with our architects and engineers. Any questions that I can answer?
Thank you, Justin. Thank you very much. Just compliments to Justin and Zach. Project's moving along well. He submitted the final pay for our two million dollars from House Bill nineteen. So all of the request is in for that, and so that should be coming through. We had already requested the half a million dollars that came through for the CTC part. So those state reimbursement funds have been submitted for the Olin Howard Center, and so that should be coming in. I also want to give a shout out and compliments to Mary in our foundation office. They've had some nice gifts here at the end and some notifications, so I won't steal or thunder, but just be watching for announcements of gifts that are coming in here at the year end and, and grants that Mary has submitted. And I think, though, we can at least say that you've met the goal for phase one and two, which gets us past the seven point one million-ish, right? Yeah, so compliments to Mary. Mary and team, and of course, thank you, those of you who could attend Karen's retirement reception last night. Mary did an excellent job of planning that. You know, Karen is leaving us tomorrow as basically her last day because we close at noon tomorrow and, and staff will have a holiday break. So we've been blessed with Karen's meticulous attention to detail for many years, and so we really thank her for that. Just want to give a shout out to our faculty and staff, a tremendous job of keeping things going as much as normal in a normal time this semester and really staying on top of things. Just a tremendous group that we work with and are blessed to have here at the college. We have begun work on our fiscal year twenty-three budget looking ahead. So the administration did a first work event. We've got due dates to give information back to Keith. But I would think that as a board, we would look at having a planning session probably in February of having a budget planning meeting, which we've done in the past years in spring, so it kind of first looked. And then I also want to say that Jingle on the Green, it was a fabulous evening. Who would have thought we could have had such a nice winter night? But compliments again to our foundation, and really it takes a whole team. They get a lot of help from across campus, including from students. It was a tremendous evening and event, and our A Club did the tram ride around the campus for our first time, and it was a ton of fun. I kind of, Ken and I kind of ended our evening with that. So anyway, just a lot of end of our calendar year activities. I know there will be tax stuff going out as soon as people get back. Faculty grades had to be submitted yesterday, and all of that is now being wrapped up with financial aid so that students know where their eligibility stands. So a ton of work still to be done in, probably they're working tonight and tomorrow until noon, and then we're on break. And at last, I would just like to welcome Jerry Greer is back, in case you didn't see Jerry back there in the back row. Jerry is now representing our retirees group, is that right? You've been elected to serve that group? All right, and Amy Brishiers is here. Amy is a candidate for the trustee position. We have four declared candidates running for the six-year term and one for the two-year term. So we will be open from one to five on the twenty-eighth, which is the last day. Thanks to Alexis is coming in on that day, in case there's any late individuals that want to sign up to run for the, the either position. And that's the end of my report, and I would entertain any questions if you have.
I thought Jerry was gonna come back around again.
Well, you just never know.
You never know, you never know. You just never know.
I would like to be able to say he has worked for every president. Opportunity awaits there.
Exactly, it is two year.
That's right. And, and just thank you to you trustees who serve. You know, it's a big commitment to be a trustee, and I truly appreciate your service and being able to work for you. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jonah. All right, so Keith, are you ready for a financial report?
As you noticed, our auditors are exceptionally abusive when they provide the audit reports to you. I want to, and I want to do take you in though and thank all the people at the college for the work they do, particularly financially. A, you know, in our business office, learning force, literally everywhere, because the amount of transactions that occurred in fiscal year twenty-one was significantly higher, primarily due to the, the influx of the COVID funds. The tracking of those, spending of those students, I mean, it was a, it was a Herculean effort. And to come out of that with no findings at all is actually pretty impressive. I would phrase it, it's extremely impressive. I've been a part of a lot of audits in my career, and I'm very used to the call you get about a month before the audit's being presented and say, we need you to come to our office and sit down, which has occurred the last two years I've been here, so we need to talk to you. We talked about the findings. I never got that call this year, till about a week before, and I got a call and said, I said, when do we have our talk? She said, don't need one this year. Nope, all clean. So I do want to give a shout out to those, but that is, it is a monumental, it, it, it's a, it's a wonderful thing. And usually the findings are minor, but to have no findings is good. So I do, I just want to reiterate on that, I know. Also, I'm in your packet, I want to give you some context to your audit. You've got a sixty-page document of a lot of numbers that she went through in about five minutes and said, look at this page, look at this page, look at this page, look at this page. And for you who've been here the first time, that's pretty much what they do. There's no commentary from the auditor, they just, they present the numbers. I want to give you some context. So in your packet, I'm in the financial report section, I don't, you have black and white cups, you have colored cups. You'll see a, a, a page that says reconcile financial performance, looks like this. What I do and started doing is I take, and I give you some context historically, I give you some context. Now, one of the questions becomes, how did the college do? And I answered, me, how did we do? How do we manage our funds? How do we use our funds? And in a vacuum, those don't have much meaning. So what I try to do is give you a context for that based on the audit statements. So I wanted to walk you through twenty-twenty-one, how I, and this is how I do it. I'm not gonna say this is right, I'm not gonna say every college does it, this is my way of helping me want to understand it, helping you understand it. So the very first, you know, item one was this audit statements. These are the numbers from the audit statement. You'll see in twenty-twenty-one, there were operating revenues of twenty-one point one million. There's operating expenses of forty-seven million. And we were in, operating revenue was something that we got revenue because we created the transaction, basically tuition fees. Non-operating revenues are obviously the state. We didn't, nothing we did, you know, from a transaction someone created those. So operating expenses were forty-seven million and, you know, operating, there was an operating loss of twenty-six million. And had we not had, you know, state funds, property funds, we would have effectively lost twenty-six billion. Then non-op. And had we not had, you know, state punch, property punch, we would have, that we lost 26 million. Then non-op, non-operating revenues were 28 million. So you'll see that we had a change in the net position of the audit of 2.6 million. That's, that's good. Um, cause there are a lot of things going into that. And you'll see that years prior to that from 2016 forward. And actually, if you go back for the, that many years. To actually have a positive change, a positive position in an audit right now, it's extremely difficult primarily because of the pension expense. Um, from essentially it's an unfunded pension that we share that liability in. And because of that, it becomes very difficult to truly get a, a. You know, cause we give you a balanced budget beginning of the year. It doesn't have that in it. And then those get added to it. Um.
Could you also address the difference? I mean, if they look historically between operating loss and non-operating, maybe you were moving there, but I wanted to remind you.
Thank you. Yes. They changed how they consider operating. So in the past. They actually used to, so if you look at the number between operating revenues, it looks, it went down significantly. And it looks like non-operating revenues went up significantly. There were some, so what really happened with operating revenues this year, I thought, choose over it. They changed classification. Operating revenues used to include, they let pale go into that. They let A-plus go into that. They let some of these government scholarship type programs be part of operating revenues. Uh, because it was technically paying for tuition and fees. It wasn't, you, you didn't, you know, it wasn't just, you know, like say. Or practice, you use it wherever you want to. They were actually tied to a specific thing. This year, um, the GASP, they like to say, no. We're going to, we're going to do it, take those down. So really the difference in operating revenues is the fact that A-plus and pale in particular went down to classify as non-operating versus operating. So that's why those numbers look dramatically different year over year. So really I look at the bottom line in this case, because they, they just use different buckets. Um, so the fact we had a positive position on it was, is, is good, substantial. Then what I do is I add back certain things that are. Non-cash, out of our control, don't really affect our operations. Say, how do we do operationally? Um, for those who weren't here, item two, you know, back in 2019, uh, we did have a finding. And that finding was, um, dealt with our financial aid and we actually incurred a penalty of $392,000. Uh, that's what that comes for, for a couple of you that were around then. It was not a good, good, it was not a good on. Um, but so, so what I did is I adjusted back and I just, we have none of that. Uh, the next item is the GASP reconciliation. It's GASP 68, 75 of pronouncements that basically say we must recognize the unfunded liabilities of your pension. And this year, um, that was a, the expense was of 2.2.265774, you know, million dollars. So I had that back show without that, what would have been, you can see each year that number tends to grow. Um, little by little and more little sometime. So that is a number of those financials. We literally, it's, it's given to us by, uh, PSRS and peers. So I had that back. This is a non-operating thing. Then I add back into appreciation. We don't much for depreciation. It's a non-cash event, um, for us. Um, but then I, I do deduct out our debt reduction. It's, you know, payments. So, you know, what did we actually have to pay for our debt? Instead of using appreciation, what did we pay for our debt? And then I deduct any other capital expenditures. Money we spend that becomes capitalized because in depreciation, we had to pay cash for it. And this year, there was a lot of, a lot of money spent in technology. This room, other places, you see close to a million dollars there and capital expenditures there. So you wash all that out. It kind of gives us, us the bottom line says reconcile compared to financial performance. And this is as close to what I would call a, a true net income as we're going to get in this world. Um, so you'll see this year, our, what I consider our true operating income was about $5 million compared to prior years. You'll see, um, you know, 18, I turned all positive. Um, where it's 2017, 2016. So that would give you an example of the, the increase we had this year. Then I want to say, what does that mean from a cash and reserve standpoint? So the, the bottom table is that. So for example, um, our cash balance in the 2020 was $6.7 million. See that? Our cash balance at the end of this fiscal year, uh, which is the audit is 14.1 million, which was an increase of 7.4 million. Some of that was because we got our CDs matured, we didn't cash. So the next one down is cash plus investments, which takes into account the CDs. So you see last year, we really had 8.3 million in cash plus C, plus investment CDs. And this year it was all cash of 14.1. So a truly an increase of 5.8 billion in cash investments. And then the last one, the operating assets reserve, that I take into account our current liabilities. So that, um, any current liabilities, I consider, you know, that you got to take that out of the reserves, not a reserve. And that includes your, your debt principal payments coming up in the next year. It's about a $2 million number, as you see overall. So really, if you look at that on the same, using the same math, same basis. Our operating assets reserve last year at this point, at the end of June 30th, 2020 was 7.785 million. This year was 12.9 million. All those are an increase again of 5.1 million dollars in that reserve, which parallels pretty much the, the, you know, operating, um, what I call operating profit. So. We did it in this, so bottom line is we ended this year in a strong position. I want to give you some context on the, on as you look at the audit, some context on what it means from prior years. Um, some context on, um, kind of what went into it. So it's more and more help you, help you understand what you're looking at here. But it was. A lot of things happened in COVID. Uh, we were, we strategically were able to, to, to utilize those funds for the progress of the college. Okay? So, hope that helps. Second page is the, the, I'll go, it's just real quickly, just the, uh, financial report of the college itself. Nothing has changed. Uh, November's a slow month. Uh, we, we really aren't doing much in enrollment yet. That December, so you're, the numbers actually don't change much except for the expenses. But again, as, as you know, we're still down about 400,000, uh, year to date in our tuition and fees. You see that. So, so you know, our state appropriations are running a bit ahead of last year. And expenses are aligned more with, uh, 2020 to 2021. 2020 while COVID hit in 2020, it was still mostly a non-COVID year. And our expenses are going back to that level. It kind of, you know, we, we really shut expenses down a fair amount last year, as you expect. Um, I'm a little concerned that, um, not surprised that our revenues or expenditures is negative. Um, that's because the, um, we are behind budget on tuition. We will be making some of that difference up as we go forward. And we are, you know, we are watching our expenses. I want to say we have a pretty stops in place. We're watching. Um, there's things we need to do this year that we didn't do last year. And given the strength last year, we need to make sure some of the things in, it's our professional things that I continue. So we just, we skip here. So any questions on either of the two things I've given you? Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. We'll just continue to learn more and more. Thank you so much. All right. So ready for board discussion? Does anybody have anything that they want to bring forward? Thank you for introducing some of our guests. I thought of that as I, uh, headed out the chocolate candy bars and then got busy and forgot to say thanks. We are glad to always have, uh, you know. Glad to have you, Jerry, coming back. And Amy, thank you for, for attending as well. So, don't see any, uh, other things other than, you know, I just, uh, I know we're getting ready to go into closed session and. And as we then, you know, progress to, you know, we come back out of that, you may not be in here. So. Uh, on behalf of the board, we just want to say, um, you know, to employees, uh, all of you, what a wonderful job you do. You make State Fair Community College what it is. Because of your dedication, your passion shows. And so we just say a big thank you for all that you do. As well as want to wish you a very Merry Christmas. Um, take the time that you have off to enjoy it. Um, enjoy that time with family and, and. I know you'll have to get a little bit of work done, um, you know, while you're off work, but, uh, take that time and we'll look forward to seeing you in 2022. So thank you, thank you for your, your leadership and all of you. You do such a tremendous job that, that you make us very, very proud. Okay. So nothing else? Uh, if not, then we'll, uh, uh, make, entertain a motion for closed session. I always want to.
A and C.
A and C. All righty. So I'll entertain a motion.
I'll motion.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
But this takes a roll call.
Oh, nevermind. You're right.
That's okay.
Yeah. So I'm sorry. So you get to do the roll call.
Okay, Tim.
Yes.
Justin.
Yes.
Nick.
Yes.
Richard.
Now, where's the hall?
Yes.
All righty.
Yeah. To judge. Okay. I want to make sure it wasn't this morning. Okay. Just make sure we won't. I said it's just been crazy.